Good morning, welcome to Harden County Commissioners' Court. Today is Wednesday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. It is ten a.m. and we're having this on a Wednesday because yesterday's holiday. Welcome everybody and if you don't mind, please write the dedication. This will be delivered by Commissioner Young.
Lord, I want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. I pray for your hand of protection over our law enforcement and all first responders. Keep us in your will, forgive us where we have failed you, and be with us today as we conduct the business of the county. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I forgot to call the meeting order, but everyone is here and this meeting is called to order. We move on to item number three, which is to consider and possibly approve the minutes of the October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five regular and special meetings as presented by the county clerk, Connie Beckman.
Sir, move.
A motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Beckman. Number four, consider approval of request by the Honorable Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, to cancel all registered claims from October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, accept the quarterly report for the third quarter, twenty twenty-five, and approval of today's cash statement as presented. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm asking the court to release me the liability of two million, five hundred ten thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents. On our cash report summary for today and general checking, we have five hundred sixty-three thousand, nine hundred seventeen dollars and twelve cents. First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, nineteen million, one hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. And Texpool General, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, five hundred ninety-nine and thirty cents for totaling cash funds of twenty million, fifty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars.
Summarize.
Okay, and then in my quarterly cash report, for the third quarter of twenty twenty-five, this is ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in general checking, we had seven million, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred fifty-seven dollars and eight cents. First Financial Bank, general checking, special money market, fourteen million, five hundred forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixteen cents. Texpool, three hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred ten dollars and sixty-nine cents for total in cash funds of twenty-one million, nine hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-three cents. This is a decrease in the cash balance for the third quarter in the amount of six million, seven hundred twenty-three thousand, nine hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-nine cents. The reason that the general checking removed money at the end of the budget year so that the auditor's office can take care of all the zero balances and everything. So, as soon as the month ended, I moved the money right back into investments. So, it was just a few days that we did that, but it's for bookkeeping. Other funds invested, in Texpool ARPA, we had one hundred sixty-one thousand, five hundred ten dollars and eight cents. In the First Financial Bank, ARPA's special money market, three million, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars and fifty-three cents for totaling ARPA of four million, eighty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. Also, while we're looking at this report, if you would, the first page of my report is the recap, and then the next two pages are the ending amounts in each bank account for the months of June, August, and September. And then we had that discussion last court about how could we tell what monies were coming in and going out? And this shows your cash receipts and your cash disbursements for those three months so you could look over at your different funds to see which ones still have a negative balance and which ones are clearing up pretty good. That's one way to tell how much money is coming in. On this first page also shows those receipts in, under the Texpool and the money market, that's your entry, excuse me, your interest that came in for those three months, so.
Thank you.
Those reports.
Moving to approve. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve as presented, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item five is authorization to pay county bills as presented by Mrs. Candace McKinney, county auditor. Good morning, Mrs. McKinney.
Good morning. Pre-appreciated expenditures for October twenty-ninth through the thirtieth are one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Pre-appreciated expenditures for November fifth are forty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. Expenditures for today, Commissioners' Court, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, are four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars and forty-four cents. A couple of additional bills. One to the Harden County CSD restitution fund for October county and district restitution victim payout in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty-six cents. And a payment to TAC Health Benefits Pool for health and live vision insurance for three hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventeen cents. Total expenditures and transfers are two million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Gross payroll for October thirtieth was six hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and thirteen cents. The total transfer of that payroll was eight hundred and twelve thousand, fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. McKinney. Number six, consider request by the Honorable Chris Kirkendall, County Commissioner, to adopt resolution thirty-three dash twenty-five, authorizing and approving execution of agreement with Cadence Equipment Finance, a division of Cadence Bank, to finance a two thousand twenty-five Caterpillar motor grader, model number one forty dash fifteen, ID number two-five, NE one-two-two-zero, serial number reading in zero-two-eight-four for the R and D two department, as approved in Commissioners' Court on October fourteenth. A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There's some drilling going on around here, so that's what that noise is. It's not my stomach or.
I thought it was somebody's stomach. Somebody is.
Little construction ongoing, we're hoping that gets wrapped up soon. Number seven, consider approval of request by Mrs. Melinda Harrington, Human Resources Director, to authorize the county judge to sign the Air Med Care Network Membership for Payroll Deduct Only Agreement. Good morning, Mrs. Harrington. Is there anything changed from last year's agreement to this year's?
No, sir, this is just authorizing that to the employees who chose to elect Air Med Care this year.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item number eight, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant administration and planning services pertaining to the two thousand twenty-two Resilient Communities Program through the Texas General Land Office, Community Development and Revitalization, and appoint an evaluation committee to make recommendations for our award to Commissioners' Court. Mrs. Sims, do you have a name of a committee to appoint?
Yes, sir.
Three names, I guess, at least?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Kirkendall, Erin Tepper, and Clay Woodward.
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for grant administration and planning services pertaining to the local hazard mitigation plans program through the Texas General Land Office, Community Development, and Block Grant mitigation, and appoint an evaluation committee to make recommendations for our award to Commissioners' Court. Same people?
Yes, sir. Kirkendall, Tepper, and Woodward.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number ten, consider and possibly authorize payment of invoice number two oh one two seven three to Imagine Learning LLC in the amount of four thousand, four hundred thirty-one dollars as requested by Chief Juvenile Probation Officer Monica Kelly. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number eleven, consider and possibly authorize the county judge to sign an agreement with Imagine Learning LLC as requested by Chief Kelly. I think Monica had to be out today, but she said, "Man, let's review this and everything's in order."
It's just, Matt looked over the contract, everything was fine. It's just our annual renewal for our online education services for our detention center.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twelve, consider and possibly authorize the replad of Lot Nine, Unit Four, Creekwood Subdivision, Volume Two, Page two forty-two dash eight, plat records of Harden County, Texas, into lots nine A and nine B, Unit Four, Creekwood Subdivision J dot F, Callahan Survey, abstract number five eighty-eight, Harden County, Texas. And this is located in Precinct Three, so we'll go with Commissioner Young.
Yes, sir. I've been involved with this process. It's disbilled the lot for some family members, so I move that we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by, was it Commissioner Kirkendall? Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and that plat is on the table back here when we finish, please. Number thirteen, consider and possibly approve Resolution thirty-four dash twenty-five, requesting a public sale of properties acquired by the county of Harden at a delinquent tax sale. Morning, Mrs. Kirkendall, how are you? I think we have lots of questions about this.
I have lots of answers.
Now, we have a resolution that has all the properties listed out and the minimum bid amounts. Is there anything you want to add to that?
We did send out neighboring letters to all the adjacent properties. We haven't heard anything back yet, but we just did that last week. So, we're hoping to get some people interested that live near this property.
And that's going to be during the December tax sale, is that right? What's that date?
December second.
December second, right out here in the lobby. Is it ten a.m. or nine a.m.?
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m.?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Young to adopt Resolution thirty-four dash twenty-five, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number fourteen is canvass the results from the November fourth, two thousand twenty-five Constitutional Amendment Special Election in accordance with section sixty-seven point zero zero seven of the Texas Election Code. This will be presented by Ms. Alyssa Freeman, the Elections Administrator. Good morning, Ms. Freeman, how are you?
Good morning, good.
How are you?
Good.
We had a total turnout of four thousand, two hundred and ninety-six voters. That was nine point eight percent of the county. For Proposition One, there were two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one votes for and one thousand, six hundred and seventy-one against. Proposition Two had three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two for and five hundred against. Proposition Three was three thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine for and eight hundred and eleven against. Proposition Four was two thousand, four hundred and forty-one for, one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight against. Proposition Five was three thousand, five hundred and forty-four for, six hundred and sixty-seven against.
Ms. Freeman? Were there any that got voted down that all of them passed in Harden County?
My knowledge, yes.
Do you have to print out, do you have to read out all that? Or can we just say, "All seventeen propositions passed"?
That's fine with me.
Does the court have any objection to that?
I do not.
Sir.
I have a motion by Commissioner Cooper to accept the canvas as presented, and seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? It's also displayed on the screen so everybody can see all the numbers there, and it'll be recorded into the record.
I think I might be wrong, statewide passed also, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Freeman. She's already gone. I'll thank her later. Fifteen, presentation by Mrs. Misty Sims, purchasing agent, of results of bids received for motor fuel and possibly awarded to successful vendors. Good morning, Mrs. Sims.
Good morning. It's open on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, at two p.m. in the Purchasing Department. Myself, Cat Boyett, and a mid, I'm sorry, that's not correct. That's from last time, no midtext person was present. The only bid we received was from Tricon Inc., and as you remember, the fuel is evaluated on the markup and other charges due to the reckless and changing daily. So, Tricon bid, their markup is point zero seven nine on gasoline and diesel, and then the other charges is point zero one nine for each as well. So, that's a point zero nine eight for each of those. We only received one bid, so I went back and looked at last year. Tricon got the bid last year too, and at that time, their markup was a total of point zero eight nine.
This is quite a bit lower, right? Point zero eight nine down to point zero one nine?
Yes, sir.
What's the other charges?
Oh, I'm not sure what the other charges, but you totaled both of those up, so.
So, it's still eight nine, no?
No, point zero nine eight, and last year was point zero eight nine. So, that's, yeah, it did go up.
All right. And we save sales tax now, right?
I believe so.
Have we communicated that to our vendors? The legislature passed where counties no longer, we're exempt like school districts, and we don't take the state sales tax on fuel, motor fuel.
Do you recall, I know this is the second year. Was there any other bids last year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is the first year they're going to.
Yes, sir, and I reached out to the other two to ask why they didn't, and I haven't received any response so far.
You know what, I'm wondering if they're having a hard issue with hiring drivers?
Yeah.
Because I know that's been an issue with some of them in the past is that they don't have enough drivers to make the deliveries. So, that may, they may not have bid because of that. So, total increase is from zero eight nine to point zero nine three? Nine eight?
It's point zero nine eight.
Point zero nine eight, okay, got it. Does that sound reasonable, or should we try to see what happened with the other bids?
The only thing, other thing we can do is re-bid it, and the one we have in place right now, it's good through November thirtieth, so we'd have a little gap there. If y'all want to re-bid it, we could.
Are we bidding this once a year or twice a year?
Just once a year. I'm not sure why.
Track on has done us a fantastic job. I put your recommendation. I'm sorry.
I mean, it's up to the court.
I've moved to approve. I second. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve the bid as presented, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Number sixteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to create the following revenue and expense line items in the special revenue fund zero eight two, Article eighteen seizures, previously established in Commissioners' Court on June tenth. And that's increase the revenue by thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and create the line item zero eight two, three five two, two oh two, forfeiting gambling proceeds. And then the expenditures would be three thousand dollars for investigative expenditures, five thousand dollars for minor equipment and supplies, less than five thousand dollars, one thousand dollars for travel and training expense, two thousand dollars for miscellaneous, five thousand dollars for equipment purchase, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars for auto purchase, and fifteen thousand for software license and support. Sheriff, could I read those off directly?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Sir.
A motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nineteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to create and increase the following revenue and expense line items in the general fund with the proceeds from the sale of sheriff's office vehicles previously approved in Commissioners' Court on October twenty-eighth. Create a new line item for revenue in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars, zero one zero, three six four, five sixty, sale of assets, and increase the auto purchases line item in the sheriff's budget by the same amount, being twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion?
Judge, I think the sheriff meant to put road bridge to auto purchase.
He might have, he might have. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Eighteen, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase two two thousand twenty-four Chevrolet Tahoe PPVs in the amount of forty-nine thousand, four ninety-nine, twenty-five each from Lake Country Chevrolet, utilizing the Good Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program for a total of ninety-nine, two ninety-eight, fifty. That'll come out of auto purchases in the amount of ninety-eight, nine ninety-eight, fifty, and three hundred dollars from the dues and subscriptions line item.
Sir, move.
Motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young, in the dues and subscriptions, that's the goodbye fee. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Nineteen, is consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to purchase two two thousand twenty-five Chevrolet Tahoe PPVs in the amount of fifty-three, eight twenty-one, ninety-five each from Lake Country Chevrolet, utilizing the Good Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program for a total of one oh seven, nine forty-three, ninety. Auto purchases in the amount of one oh seven, six forty-three, ninety will fund that purchase, and then dues and subscription in the amount of three hundred. Motion by Young, seconded by Cook. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cooper?
Sheriff, you don't got to come up here.
Go ahead.
I could only get two twenty-four.
That's all they had left. Those were, I think, cancellations by one of the bigger agencies that they didn't take at the last minute, so we were able to get those. Of course, they'll come with full warranty, full, you know, but that's all they had. I would have bought four if they had them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I always pick on Misty when she has a big, long bunch of agenda items, and she asked me was I going to pick on the sheriff, and I told her no. So, this is not me calling this the sheriff's agenda, but.
Misty doesn't carry a gun.
That's right. She asked me though, was I going to call it the sheriff's agenda, and I said, "No." Number twenty, consider approval of request by Sheriff Davis to authorize payment in the amount of fifty-two thousand, two sixty, forty-nine to Finix, is that how you say it?
Phoenix.
Phoenix, for equipment upfeeding of new sheriff's office vehicles utilizing the Byboard Cooperative Purchasing Program, the SB twenty-two grant funding, and line item zero three four, five six zero, five seven four, auto purchases.
Sir.
Sir.
Motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Twenty-one, consider and possibly authorize the purchasing agent to solicit proposals for commissary and food services for the Harden County Jail facility and appoint an evaluation committee to make recommendations for our award to Commissioners' Court. Want to name the committee?
Yes, sir. Sheriff Davis, Commissioner Cook, and Scott Ellis, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? I guess if you second it, you want to serve on the committee.
Right.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Twenty-two, consider approval of request by the Honorable Corey Tico, Constable Precinct Four, for the constable to sign an annual agreement between Harden County Jefferson Independent School District and Harden County Constable's Office, Precinct Four, whereby the constable will appoint an appropriate number of reserved deputy constables to be employed full-time by Harden Jefferson ISD as school resource officers to provide law enforcement services for HJA ISD and determine the current memorandum of understanding between Harden County and Harden Jefferson ISD dated August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Good morning, Constable.
Good morning, sir.
You've been working on this for a few months.
Mine, I got it, all the kinks worked out.
Well, thank you for getting it done, and thanks to Matthew Minnick as well. He's been very involved.
And you, you was helped that from there.
Just a little bit. I'll second. I have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Judge McDaniel. This will mean that those reserved deputy constables will work directly for the school. All payroll, any resources, everything comes from the school, man. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Corey?
Yes, sir.
I guess the reason why it's listed as reserved deputy constable because that's how they're currently listed, is that correct?
So, they're full-time peace officers as of now, to y'all, and we change some stuff up. But they're still, Tico gave us rules how to change that, so we're not going to leave them. They're still full-time peace officers, so they're getting paid for their services for that.
So, according to Tico, we have to list them as reserved deputy constables? Or is that this?
I just want to say that was added.
It was a request that I made. They're currently deputy constables being paid by the county. Since they'll no longer be paid by the county, I made a request that we change them to reserved deputy constables, and Tico actually replied back last Wednesday or Thursday and said that was the best way to handle it as well, since they're not being paid by the county anymore.
But they still be full peace officers.
But they'll be full-time.
They still be carried full-time on the Tico.
So, you think that'd be better to list them as reserved?
Yes, sir. It just shows that the county's not paying any of their benefits or anything like that anymore. They're getting paid by the school.
Well, the wording's changed on that. Either full-time peace officers or part-time. Their reserve status has been pulled out, but we're not going to, we're, we're going to change the wording on that. But just the way it is on Tico, when we do TIC ads, they did it full-time or part-time.
And thank you for the work on this, I know y'all.
Always been rough.
Three point three on paid order. Even though you're carrying commission, it says you're not liable, according to this, correct? Or three point four, should I say?
That's what, that's what the, that's what it says, correct? But, and Matthew and Blake, the lawyer for them, that's, they worked that all out to be the wording. So, and if they're approved that, and they're just need to see if we approve that also.
You know, all along, that's been one of my major hangups is the liability that this place is on the county.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure our attorney and their attorneys have taken all over this part of it, but I would say, I mean, I'm for this, I'm going to give you a vote on this, a positive vote. But I would say, if you're carrying a commission, Harden County's still going to be liable.
Yeah, yeah, have a look, yes, sir.
The way I read this is the constable will not be liable for any acts that HJA ISD performed with these reserved deputy constables.
And that's the reason why we limited our liability as much as I could with what we did. So, just to make sure the county's got it covered. So, and if they make a mistake with this, or the school just tells them to do something because now they're their employee, that they're acting on the different end instead of what I would want to do.
A question, I guess, I don't know if the judge has already brought this up with you or not. What, what was the reason why they couldn't start that on the police department?
They don't meet the criteria due to the local law enforcement status we have in that area. They're not wanting to start another PD. There have been rubber stamping, all of them. They had so much problems in the past. They changed when the Sunset Law came in, they changed the rules, so they don't meet their criteria for starting a new PD. So, they had, Starlight there, Harden County was there, I was there, so they wanted to pay the local agency to supply that instead of starting their own.
And that's Tico, right?
That's Tico, and that's, we already had that discussions, and I sent the video to, y'all should have watched the video I sent. I sent it to Judge about when they come up with that, and I think Amanda's seen it also, and that was what they were looking for, and we, they couldn't get around that.
Do you know right offhand, with the way that it's set up now or the way it's going to be set up when we accept this, your reserve officers, will they be able to enforce school policy?
We still didn't.
Instead of just state law?
We're not doing, we're still separating, we're separating the powers of them not being school policy because they're not educational. So, they're still doing law enforcement duties only, that's their breakout.
So, your deputies will just?
Law enforcement only, no, no discipline, no anything else. It's like SROs are not deals with, we're still SROs, we're not SSOs. SSOs is the school safety officers, which is school ISDPs. We're still SROs, still we follow the SRO guidelines.[1629.32]
And one other question, I don't know if it would be you or the judge, or both, but, and I guess is Matt in?
He's in court, but he said if we need him, he could come down.
How come a five-year contract?
That's just what.
That's what, that's what they wanted. That's what the school district wanted, and we'll reevaluate in five years again, if we're gonna move forward or not.
Matt was okay with that?
He was okay with it, yes.
I would, I would prefer to have it a year, but he knows more than me, so, thank you, Corey.
If you're worried, sure, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, on the, you talked about the liability, the release of liability, it says in three point four, it puts the school with no, no liability on three point five.
What about three three? How did you read that?
Well, I don't understand what they mean by.
I mean, all that is.
Not create any employment rights.
I think you're talking about three four, aren't you?
No, I, I, both, but I, I highlighted three three as well, and I just wanted to make sure I don't read it correct. Officers employed by HJA ISD and whose commission is held by the constable, which is our reserved deputy constables, are and will remain employees of HJA ISD. And this agreement does not create any employment rights or uh agreement between the SRO and constable. So I was assuming that they would have all say so while they're working for HJA ISD and not Corey.
That's the way I think.
But it's, it's not, it's law enforcement agents, it's, well, we understood that, the way, the word is, is they're employees, I can't control whether they get for actions that happen to do the breaking the policy of the district, I have no say so, but law enforcement, I do. I still, I still control.
I would, I would, I guess that section also would cover the fact that if another constable somewhere else in the county had a reserved const, deputy constable. Because they was getting off all summer long, you're getting paid for it, doesn't necessarily mean somebody else would that's not working for HJA ISD.
And it's, well, it's, that's one of the issues, if we couldn't ever, we was trying to make it mesh together with the county's policies on time off, it's kind of, they're, they're following the policy of the school district on their, on their time. The school district pays them whatever, they're working two sixteen, two twenty-six, or two sixty, that's, I can't control what they do when they work stuff, they don't.
If, if the sheriff had a reserved deputy. Well, I don't know how we would compare that, because they're not getting paid, but the time off problem, I would see as gonna be a problem for other law enforcement in, in Harden County. If, if one of your, one of your reserved deputies is off all summer, like the school. I guess that, that, that's why that's in there, is to bypass it.
Yeah, bypass it.
Because they're getting paid by the district.
The district, and we don't, we don't, the, our HR with the county is not enforcing that.
Thank you, Corey, no, thank you, sir.
Mr. Cook, did that answer your question?
Yeah, it, it did, but I, and I too, as Commissioner Cooper said, I, I would prefer to see it be a one-year contract instead of automatically renewing. But I mean, I can live, I can live with a five-year, we still have a right to terminate for ninety-day notice without cause, so.
That's correct. That's the reason why we put that a little bit forward.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you very much. Next one's yours, too. Twenty-three, consider approval of request by Constable Jeff Coop to appoint Charles Gillie and Shawna Pippin, is that right? As reserved deputy constables for Harden County Constable's Office Precinct four pursuant to Local Government Code eighty-six point oh one two, effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. And revoke previous authority by the Commissioners' Court to appoint these individuals as deputy constables under Local Government Code eighty-six point oh one one, effective November fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. These reserved deputy constables will be assigned to HJA ISD as our SROs under the new ILA that we just approved.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Cook, I'm sorry, Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you again.
Any, any other questions, y'all have to listen up, anything?
Uh, we do, thank you. Twenty-four, consider approval of request by Commissioner Cook to amend the fiscal year twenty-six budget by transferring forty thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars from RMB fund balance to zero one seven six two four five seventy, equipment purchase. Related to fiscal year twenty-five encumbrance, encumber expenses for the purchase of a Mustang Cat forty-inch mulcher HM two oh eight, serial number ending in six zero one two from Mustang Cat, that was not delivered and installed until fiscal year twenty-six. Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Cooper, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number twenty-five, consider and possibly authorize request by Mr. Aaron Tupper, Director of Technology, to upgrade the county phone system to a cloud-based system hosted by vested networks LLC. At a monthly cost of four thousand nine hundred twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, utilizing a cooperative purchasing program. This upgrade includes all new equipment, onsite installation, and training, and continued support for sixty months. If approved, we'd also need to amend the fiscal year twenty-six budget as follows. Twenty-four thousand dollars being moved from the contingency general line item to the telephone expense line item zero one zero four oh one four twenty.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Young, any discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What happens after the end of sixty months?
Yes, sir, so at that time, we could enter into a, a new contractor, go out for bid uh for.
A whole new system?
A whole new system, a whole new vendor, uh.
You asked them after sixty months if they expected this price to go up, and what was the answer when you asked them that?
Uh, I can't recall.
I, I think you said it might go up a little bit, but you didn't expect it to be a large increase, and we're gonna try to zap us for another, you know, a large amount of money.
Yeah. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a large increase. It's, and in fact, as they've been, throughout the process, as they've been adding more counties, they've actually been able to get the cost down. Uh, so when we first started this, we're looking at, at different options, the cost was quite a bit more than this, and they've, we've narrowed the scope a little bit, and they've also added additional counties throughout the state. Were able to pass on cost savings.
I think he also said if they were to try to go up a large amount of money, it would be in violation of their state, that TIPS contract, isn't that right, Misty? So I mean, if there's inflation that causes them to have to go up a little bit on their monthly charges, they may have to see a little bit of an increase, but he said there would not be a, it's not like trying to get us in the door and then make a large increase when we renew, there might just be a small percentage increase.
And this price per month is comparable to other, other services?
Yes, sir, the, we had got some prices, uh, probably at least a year, year and a half ago, to, when, when I started noticing issues with phones, and, and there were actually quite a bit more. Uh, they were where vested networks started off at, you know, six, seven grand a month, uh, for the same type of, of service. As far as the, the cloud base and all that, uh, I, I don't believe those vendors that we were looking at had the backend support as this company does.
And it's still quite a bit lower than when each office had their own landline from the telephone company?
Objection.
Yeah.
Objection.
And we're paying two hundred and thirty dollars a month right now just for a fax lineup, you know, to park.
Wow.
Yeah. And according to whoever you talk to, some of those old copper lines are about to go away.
Yes.
They're not, they're not repairing them as they go bad. Can you believe that?
I can.
Uh, I'll just tell you, one of the vendors we looked at, it's been about a year ago, was Ring Central, and I think they were right under nine thousand a month, and they don't have the support that this company has, they don't, they don't have somebody that's coming from Tyler, is that where they come from? They don't guarantee a four hour response time.
I mean, they have a guaranteed response time, uh, they pick up the phone, they actually monitor how many seconds it takes for them to answer the phone when we call them, but they're, they're very, very customer satisfaction based.
Any other discussion? Anyone else? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Did he say how long it would take them to get going?
Uh, once we sign the initial stuff, they'll start working on it, they'll order all the, the hardware and stuff, start programming, start reporting over our numbers. Believe uh, the, the shoot start date will be in January timeframe to go live with the system.
Sounds good. Alright, item number twenty-six, discussion on any other non-agenda item without taking action, including announcements which may be of interest to the public. Um, before we go into that, Mr. Minnick here, did you want to ask him about the five-year home agreement?
Matt, it's just a question I had on that contract with Corey, now, was there a reason why we went five instead of one, and did someone want that, or?
The orig, the original MOU was for five years, and so I just didn't change it, but that's the reason why. We went originally, we went on, wanted to come back to court every single year for the last MOU, and so I just never changed it, and so HJ, when they, uh, their attorney was reviewing it, they didn't change that language, they just kept it at five. Um, but they, either party has the right to terminate thirty days in advance, so that's why I wasn't really worried about it, because of the thirty-day termination clause from both sides. Like.
That was the only question they had.
Okay.
I didn't tell them what you really said, they didn't want that to deal with it every year. But you didn't say that.
I didn't say that. Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir. Uh, on twenty-six, I want to bring up the letter that I forwarded to y'all, I, I think it was a few days ago, where the federal government shut down, uh, what the status is of that, of course, I guess they're gonna open the government up today or tomorrow, hopefully, but uh, we did get a letter from DSHS that said they were guaranteeing our health services grants through the end of November, even if the shutdown continues, but hopefully that ends today, or, or maybe first thing in the morning, we don't have to worry about that anymore. And I did update y'all as well, that we uh, I signed, or we got the notice of award from uh, the Office of the Governor for the Crime Victims Assistance Center, and I accepted that award, so that's finally done, it just took a lot longer than normal. Those are the only two items I had, did y'all have anything, Proctor, that y'all want to bring up, or any announcements? Anybody else present have any discussion items to bring up? Alright, here you go, and we'll move on to item number twenty-seven.
Please adjourn.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Young to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank y'all.